Welcome to our regular.
Welcome to our regular BCC meeting. This will be followed by our land use hearing at one o'clock. Hopefully, we'll be through by then. Jason, you want to come up and lead us in invocation and pledge?
Let us pray. We thank you for being so good to us, Jesus. Thank you for your goodness and your mercy in this season of thankfulness that we're in, that we just want to be thankful for everything, the ups and the downs, the good and the bad. Whenever we think it's going the right way or when it's not, we're just thankful to be alive, thankful that you're a force and that you're with us. We ask you to meet us here today, give us wisdom, instruction, and direction on which path we should take these decisions these commissioners made today. And we just give you all the glory and the praise for what you're going to do. We ask you in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jason. Are there any elected officials in the audience? If you are, please, right, oh, stand up, please. Argyle Fowler, Jeff Talbert, right? Isn't it Argyle?
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
And I'm glad you're in Fire District because your dad was a great chief.
Jeff Talbert.
Jeff Talbert. Jeff Talbert.
Jeff Talbert, T-A-L-B-E-R-T.
And tell your dad I said hello, please, and happy Thanksgiving. Okay. We'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Sunday, you've got any additions and deletions?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to wish everyone, commissioners, staff, and everyone a happy Thanksgiving coming up this Thursday. As far as the additions to the agenda goes, first addition is a request from the county attorney's office requesting approval to schedule and advertise a special meeting for an executive session regarding Park Properties G A dash LLC versus Walton County Department of Code Compliance, case number two-one, C A four-three-eight. The second addition is from Commissioner Johns, his chair, who is requesting to readdress the tree ordinance. Take you to item number seven. That is a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the exercise of sole option to renew contract number zero-two-one, zero-three-nine, agreement for state lobbying services with Heffley and Associates extending the term of the contract for one year effective December twentieth of this year through December nineteenth of next year. We were looking at this contract last night, and the terms of the contract is thirty-six months with the option to renew for an additional term. And so we've yet to have the opportunity to sit down with that firm and negotiate those terms. I talked to Mr. Atkinson last night, and it's his opinion that it could be anywhere from a one-year renewal to up to a three-year renewal. So I feel like we need the opportunity to work through that, and we would request to delete that item and bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda with additions and deletions.
Second.
Any comments? Any comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Sunday, please make sure that that firm contacts Commissioner Curry. And I don't think he's met me on that. And I would like for you to meet him before.
I'd like that, too, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
We will arrange that.
Okay, do we have any other items to take off the consent agenda, Commissioner Wies? I'll request a motion for to.
You did want to do public comment first?
Yeah, okay, we'll do a public comment. Anybody got any item they're going to talk about, they want to talk about that's not on the consent, I mean, that's on the any, the agenda and won't be here for when it comes up? Seeing none?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. Mr. Sunday?
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is item number twenty-four, and that's a request for approval to award invitation to bid twenty-four dash forty to the lowest, most responsive bidder, Premier Paving LLC in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and fifty-eight cent for the construction of the Walton County North End Multi-Use Trail and Pedestrian Path Connections Project. That's phase one. That is Twentieth Street from Walton Road down to Emerald Coast Technical College.
Okay, is this a firm we've used before?
This is a, if you recall, they did the sidewalks on eighty-three A in Freeport and was was a pretty good project.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none?
I have a question.
Okay.
This is paid for by DOT, correct?
This was some grant funding, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is item twenty-five. That's a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign change order number one, the contract number A D M twenty-two oh-two with Dewberry. This is for the Glendale Fire Station. They were using the plans from the Choctaw Beach Fire Station that's nearing completion. They, in that project, they recognized the need to change some of the bathrooms and the bays, in the engine bays, and so this change order for fifty-five hundred dollars takes care of that redesign.
This is paid far out of the sheriff's budget.
So there was a certain, Melissa can speak to it, obviously, but there was a certain pot of money that was earmarked for this project, and this will come out of that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. The next item is from tourism, and it is a request to approve to appoint three seats. That would be Brian Moffett to seat five, Amy Wise Kobel to seat six, and Robert Lacoste to seat nine to fill the expiring terms seats on the Tourism Development Council. The committee that was comprised that evaluated these applications were Matt Traywick, Mary King, and Matt Algren. They went through the applications, and these three individuals are their recommendations to this board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Okay.
Are all these candidates, do they live in Walton County?
Yes.
They do. Okay.
All in, any questions from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are any of the, it passes five zero, are any of the applicants here?
Ms. Kobel is here.
Ms. Kobel, would you stand, please? I know you get embarrassed really, so. Thank you for serving, and for those of you in the audience, this is a lot of her time, and I'm, I know, Amy, Amy's a very, very busy person. So we appreciate you serving on the TDC council, and you've done it before. You are a member, right, present in this past year. So, thank you, I appreciate it, and the county appreciates it, and anything you need from us, you let us know, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. The next item is also regarding the TDC council seats, seat two and seat three, which went through the same process, same evaluation panel. These two are the seats to be filled by the two largest municipalities, or a member representing the two largest municipalities, which are Freeport and Defuniac Springs. The committee's recommendations on these two was, or is Elizabeth Hafner to fill seat two. She's from the Freeport City Council. And then Anthony Valley to fill seat three from the city of Defuniac Springs.
Motion to approve.
We have a second. I'll step down from my hand and gavel of Ms. Johns, and I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board?
I'd like to, how many applications were in for this? How many people did we go through on this?
Matt?
They were recommended by the city council through one application. They have to be an elected municipal official. One has to come from the largest municipality in the county by statute. And so that, when this was set up, it was Defuniac, it probably is Freeport now, so because of the evolving census data, the county's policy when it set its TDC membership guidelines was to say that the two seats would be Defuniac and Freeport until such time as a larger municipality came to exist between the two of those. So each city council has made their nomination, recommendation from their board to this council, and then our evaluation committee at the TDC level vetted those to determine if there will be any issues.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions?
So their board made the decision?
Both city councils, they discussed it amongst themselves, discussed it, and the two current members offered the opportunity in both cases for other council members that they wanted to serve to have that opportunity. Both of these council members volunteered. In fact, they were the only nominees and volunteers from those two councils.
Well, I would like to see Amy Hefflin represent the city council member for Defuniac because not only is is she spend some of her time in the summer down on the South End, and she's very familiar with with what we go through down here, and she's very familiar with a lot of the bed tax collectors, and I think that she would be a very, very good choice for that position. And I'm fine with Elizabeth Hafner as far as seat two for Freeport, but I would prefer to see Amy Hefflin.
Well, she was, she was not picked by their council, so I feel like we need to honor their their pick.
Well, it comes to this board for final decision.
Yeah, but I don't think that we really need to go against the wishes of their council. That's their representative.
Did it go to, was it at a board meeting?
Yes, ma'am, it was in a public board meeting, and the council went through the process, and I can try to pull those minutes up to verify, but I don't recall it being a split vote.
Mr. Chairman, I guess maybe if Commissioner Johns would like to ask the city of Defuniac Springs if they would like to nominate Mrs. Hefflin instead, that that would be the board's desire, and if they do not, then I guess we could address it at another juncture.
And I would certainly think even if we do that, we would want our committee to evaluate anybody suggested, because that is our process, to let the TDC selection committee even evaluate the elected officials. The only position they do not evaluate, so we're all clear, is the chairman of this board.
Right.
Because that's automatic. So you can split this into two motions if you want, or to otherwise, and otherwise send it back like that, but we would need, at this point, if there's a split between the two people, we would need a motion to accept one and then to discuss the other would be the best way to proceed.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, this is their representative. It's sort of it's really sort of not appropriate to try to dictate who their representative is. So I'm, I think the motion is the proper motion. We, all we're doing is just basically seating who those two cities choose as their representative, and so we need to, need to vote on it.
Well, I would say that this is their confirmation hearing. We are the confirm, the confirming board, and it sounds like there may be a desire to not confirm this pick, and that's the prerogative and the authority vested in this board. So I certainly honor the alternative motion by Commissioner Johns.
And for the record, this was presented, just so everybody knows, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, at a regular city council meeting. Motion was made by current TDC member Beerbaum to appoint Valley, seconded by Harris, passed five oh by the city council.
So, I mean, they passed it five oh. And, I mean, Mr. Valley has lived in the South End. He's an architect.
Does a lot of work down here.
Does a lot of work down here. I just don't see any reason to not confirm the wishes of the city council of Defuniac, and it's basically starting trouble for no reason, because they're, all we're going to do is send it back to them, they're going to vote to send it back to us with Mr. Valley. And it's just, it's sort of beating a dead horse.
Well, at this point, since I'm chair, I cannot make a motion. I'm chair for this particular.
Where, Mr. Clay, where are we at? Do we have to dispose of the motion? Do we have to offer an alternative motion?
We have a motion to approve that has been seconded. You can dispose of that motion, or you can offer a substitute motion. But the motion, because it deals with Both seats together, unless somebody wants to offer a substitute motion to split it, the appropriate thing would be to deal with the first motion on the table. That's to the board's discretion, but we're going to have to take up another motion if this fails either way.
I'll, I'll offer a substitute motion to bifurcate the two, accepting the Freeport request and denying the Defuniac Springs request.
Okay, we have a substitute motion.
A second.
And we have a second.
So that takes precedent, so you proceed to vote on that.
Any, any further comments from the board?
Yeah, what happens when we come back in two weeks, or four weeks, or six weeks, and it's Mr. Valley again? Are we going to go through this process again? Miss, Miss Hefflin had a chance to speak her mind at the commission, at the council meeting if she wanted to be on, but apparently she voted for Mr. Valley. Is that correct?
It was passed without objection on five oh.
I mean, I don't see what the problem is here. We're trying to pick their council, their representative from their council, and I think we need to honor who they want as their council.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comment from the board? Any comment from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Lisa Vega, V E I G A. I think we all know that no one on the city council was ever going to nominate Amy Hefflin. Amy is definitely qualified, and yes, she would like this position on the TDC board. I think that we need to take it back and speak with the city council. Tony Valley's chair, or his position is up in March. We'll go through this again, because I know he's going to have stiff competition, and he may not be on the city council in a few months. So just take that into account.
Good point, thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone else in the audience?
Do you want to clarify, Commissioner Drake, with the denial, or are you asking the city council to submit a new recommendation or not? That has been this board's prior direction, to let the cities make nominations to you for your consideration.
Yes, we'll make sure the motion reflects that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Passes three to two.
So for the record, Madam Clerk, reflect that the appointment of city councilwoman Elizabeth Hafner from Freeport to fill the Freeport municipal seat on the TDC was approved, that Defuniac's recommendation was rejected with it being returned to the city council for their further consideration.
Mr. Chairman?
Brian.
Mr. Atkinson, there is nothing to stop Defuniac from returning this the exact same way, is there?
No, sir, there's not.
But it's a very good point that that was made, that that his term on that board may be, may very well be up in March, and if it is, then we would have to be finding someone else to replace anyway.
I will say this for the record, the minutes, and I'm reading the minutes. The current member stated he approved his servant on the board, but was willing to allow any other council member to take his place. That's current council member Beerbaum. Mr. Valley expressed his interest in serving on the board. The minutes do not reflect that anybody else expressed a preference, and a motion was made. So certainly, we'll have to see what that looks like and whether anybody else comes back. So I'm not going to speak for any of the council members. I'm simply reading to you what the memorialized minutes of their meeting show. I don't dispute that somebody may or may not want that opportunity, but for what it's worth, to the extent there's a question about would somebody nominate someone, that's not how these work, just like y'all are going to take up at the end of the meeting. You have the opportunity to say, hey, I'd like to serve on this board, and then the board determines who serves. It doesn't require a nomination. And second, council member expresses an interest, and two express, and then another one does, they'll go to a vote, and it will be determined. I cannot recall in recent history on the city council there they've ever had to have a split vote. Typically, if someone says they're interested, and another one says they're interested, it gets sorted out right there at the table without a vote. But it'll go back to them at a public meeting. Their next meeting is December the ninth, so it'll be presented then before your next board meeting, so you'll probably see this as quickly as December tells.
Thank you.
But they also, I mean, government is, government operates, sometimes it can be finicky. But I think that because we meet here in public, we're bound to sunshine laws, we discuss things, we have to do it publicly. So what I would say is that this board has now made an expression, albeit it was split, it was a divided expression, but it was a majority reflection of the desire of the board. So I would think in my years of working in government, and I have twenty-something years' experience working in government, that knowing that, just like what happened recently on Capitol Hill with a recent appointment by the President of the United States, there was an expression that maybe that wasn't the pick that was going to go through, that was going to make it through confirmation successfully. So go back to the drawing board, and they find someone. I would think that the city of Defuniac Springs, because they do have a working relationship with the board, they're going to come back to us on a number of occasions and ask us, can we do this? May we continue this? Shall we continue to have these partnerships? I think that they're smart enough to recognize that the board reflected its intent today, and that they'll come back with a reasonable solution.
I'm thinking.
I think they're not going to do that. I think they're going to think this is a attempt to usurp their authority, and they're going to look at it very dimly.
Well.
Well, there are five city council members. You could probably, you can get any one of those five to be sent back to you, or they could send back a list of which ones are interested. And that's happened before. I'll note there was only one of the council members' names mentioned, and that was by a member of the audience, and it was neither of the two we discussed here today.
I, I know all five of those county commissioners, and they can count the three.
Well, this has already been passed, so we're moving on. Mr. Atkinson, are you next?
Yes, sir, I believe I am, Mr. Chairman.
Got one more, I'm sorry.
Got one more, Mr. Chairman, number twenty-eight, and that is a request for approval to award invitation to bid number twenty-four dash forty-three for the Hedland Avenue Neighborhood Beach Access Project, and that would be to Three Rivers Construction Company LLC, and approve, authorize the chairman to sign the contract in the amount of seven-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-five-hundred dollars. If you recall, back in August, the Hedland Avenue Neighborhood Beach Access Project was advertised as an invitation to bid. A non-mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on October twenty-fourth. The bids were opened in November, on November eighteenth of this year, with Three Rivers Construction Company being the lowest responsive bidder with a bid of seven-thirty-one-five for the Hedland Avenue Neighborhood Beach Access. So we're asking for your approval of that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion among the board? Seeing none, any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am hereby advising the Board pursuant to two-eighty-six point oh-one-one of Florida statute that I am in need of the board's advice concerning litigation strategy and the type of expenses to be incurred in a piece of pending litigation entitled Park Properties G A LLC versus Walton County, comma, Department of Code Compliance, comma, case number twenty-one, C A four-three-eight, a circuit court case here in Walton County. I am requesting authority to schedule and advertise a special meeting for an executive session. It would be my intent to do that before the start of the December tenth meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the board? In the audience, seeing, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I believe that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, other than to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
About the public hearing?
Well, the public hearing is the next item, not directly under me, but I do need a motion to open the public hearing on number twenty-nine.
Motion to open public hearings.
Second.
Commissioners, our next item is a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign a resolution to bring forward four million-two-hundred-sixty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars in the TDC fund for the Grayton Beach Community Center, and I believe I jumped ahead of y'all, I had the motion and the second on the public hearing and have not voted on that yet.
Yeah. Okay.
You vote on the opening of the public hearing.
Sorry. Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, sorry.
Now, I'm pleased to put the guidance and the commentary of our finance director as part of the public hearing, and Mr. Chairman, you can call a public comment at this time on this issue, and then go to the board.
Okay. We have any public comment on this public hearing? This is to move the money to build a Grayton Beach Community Bathroom Boardwalk Facility. Any public comment at all? Seeing none? Any board comment?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
No.
Need a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to close the hearing, public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, Ms. John, Mr. Curry, you're up.
All right. Shane's out here, isn't he? Probably been working on this for a little while, if you could pull up. First one. The original funds for the maintenance building, and correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, but it was one-point-five million, and I've had several meetings with Shane prior to me even running for this position, and we kind of figured out that we could probably do this job a little better and get a little bit more bang for our buck on this. So my first, I broke it up into two phases. Phase one would be to do the maintenance building, add an ADA slash autistic sensory station-type playground, and two pickleball courts, and then that would be the phase one. They would still get their maintenance building at a reduced cost, thanks to Shane doing a little bit of research. These are preliminary numbers, so they may change, so that's what I'm asking the board to direct staff to bring back more precise numbers and, and okay to proceed, especially on phase one. That's something that we can do right now, we don't have to wait on anything. And then the balance of that money right now, we don't have to wait on anything. And then the balance of that money, you know, estimated somewhere around the six-hundred, would go towards two ball fields, um, and the, uh, you, the, uh, I don't know, the, the whole number out there by the middle school or by the...
That's number, uh, the southeastern corner of the property, number eleven, there's a, there's a flat area, then it coincides with some, uh, landlocked lots that we looked at, and then also some school board property that it abuts to that.
And that would be part of phase two, to get with the school board and look into, and direct staff into looking at, um, acquiring some of those landlocked lands, uh, to put in a couple, uh, ball fields. That would be an immediate, um, help for the youth, um, to have some extra ball fields up there, and that's in the general vicinity of the middle school and the little league.
It's very close to the little league fields. For those that aren't familiar with it, it's within walking distance of the little league field area.
Mr. Chairman, um, could we add to your phase one, uh, when we first bought Eagle Springs, we had, we promised, um, tennis courts, basketball, and beach volleyball, and we have yet to construct those, so could we add those to the phase one?
I think those could be done, uh, I know the tennis court could be done with the pickleball area, and the other two could be done for minimal cost. We do a beach volleyball court for next to nothing.
I don't have a problem. At this stage, we're just going to come back with numbers and then we'll all say, yeah, I'm moving forward anyway. I don't have a problem with that.
Do we need a motion for that?
We need a motion.
Just take a motion on the phase one and state, then what I'm describing as phase two, here will be directions taken.
Okay.
You make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that second.
What, I, I'm not clear on what that motion is.
Everything on phase one, but he wants to add, looking into the basketball courts, tennis courts, and then what else?
Beach volleyball.
And the staff to be coming back with pricing and securing the required documentation proposals and otherwise to report with what he has listed as phase one, which is two pickleball courts, the metal eating by one-hundred-twenty building, and ADA autistic sensory station play area, now include a tennis court, basketball court, and beach volleyball.
Well, we're, are we not, we are not committing to anything at this point, correct? There's no commitment to spend any funds at this point, correct?
Well, the, the, the funds are already, it's already allocated. I'm just taking what's already allocated and, and getting the best bang for the buck out of it.
It's already allocated. Every penny of it that we're talking about is already allocated.
Yes, ma'am, and this is directing them to use that towards that as phase one.
Because I want to make it very clear that we are still losing, how much money are we losing at the golf course right now, Melissa?
The golf course, the year-end figure for, um, just the golf course was eight-hundred-ninety-eight thousand. It was what, the expenditures exceeded the revenues, and the restaurant, I believe, was three, around three-hundred thousand.
So we're, we're still, we're losing a lot of money.
What did we take in?
That's what we've lost.
No, that's what, that, that's what we spent.
We took in nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, six-hundred-forty-one dollars in membership fees, greens fees, cart fees, and, um, pro shop fees.
All right, so, so we made money on the golf course.
And that's just the golf course. I'd, I'd have to pull up the restaurant. Can you pull that up real quick?
Mr. Chairman.
Restaurant revenues were four-hundred-eighteen-thousand dollars.
So how much were the restaurant fees? I mean, the, the payouts?
The expenses, uh, for the restaurant, seven forty-nine, two fifty-six, and then...
Golf course was eight...
For the golf course, the expenses were one-point-eight million, so the golf course expenditures exceeded revenues by eight-hundred-ninety-eight thousand.
So we are...
But, some, but this money was already, was in that budget.
Yes.
We have one-point-five million in budget.
Correct.
One million, five-hundred, forty-two thousand, six-hundred, fifty-eight dollars and forty-two cents is budgeted onto that project for a maintenance facility. So the phase one motion, to clarify, would be to allocate that money instead of solely for a maintenance facility to add, and I missed foundation and concrete, right Shane, the concrete had been built as well.
We looked, we looked at it and thought we could break this up into different sections and do it much more economical than just putting it up for bid for somebody to bid an astronomical amount on it, and we found, what we found was, uh, we got a quote on doing the building with insulation for around two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. We got a quote for concrete for around a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. We spoke to facility maintenance, and they could do the rough end for minimal cost, and also public works could do the site work and the asphalt work for minimal. So we could take half of that money and achieve all these things you see in this first phase, and then still the other half left over to try, maybe do additional baseball fields.
Well, I think it's great that we want to do all of these things, but we're still losing a million dollars a year at that golf course, and we brought it up, uh, several, several months ago, uh, maybe a year ago, that, that we want, I requested a consultant to come and find out what we could do to stop the bleeding. I don't want to close the golf course, I want to keep it open. I know it's beneficial, but wait a minute. But I also feel that we need to find out what we can do to not lose so much money before we spend any more money there. We need to find out, and I know for a fact that I had brought up at a previous meeting this, and I was told by our admin that we were not going to be hiring anyone else, that that was, they were going to be looking at ways to reduce the, the expenses that we have, and after that meeting, they hired someone for, as a server. So this board said, no, don't hire anyone, and then after that, they, they did. And I also understand that they're using people from facilities maintenance to work for the golf course, and they're falling under facilities maintenance. And I think we really need to get this straightened out.
I do too, because that's not correct.
And we really need to find, we really need to find out exactly what's going on, and we really need to make sure that we're doing the best we can for the community as a whole, and that, that we're, we're not just having money just drained through this one facility. I want it to be done, I want it to be done right. I want it, us to be able to do, you know, I mean, I was told before that you and a few others were going to be able to look at different options and see, you know, where we might be doing something wrong, where we can do something better. And I haven't seen anything come before the board yet that's done that, and we're still at the same spot we were a year ago.
Okay, so first thing, uh, no facility maintenance workers ever worked at the golf course, that's untrue completely. Uh, second thing is, we've tried, the, the way we get this is to raise our fees. We've talked about raising our fees three different times, but we haven't done it. That takes board approval.
Well, well, bring it, let's do it. Let's do it.
We're ready to do it, and our point of sale...
What would you recommend?
Our receipts, our receipts, I looked at our receipts yesterday, our receipts, and I have to give a Melissa, because our numbers are always different. Our receipts show one-point-one million in golf revenue, and you take it, when you back out the capital expenditures, our budget was around one-point-six million, so we have five-hundred-and-twelve memberships. I recommend a twenty to twenty-five percent increase. If we do that, then we're doing, because that place, whether, I mean, we have five-hundred-and-twelve memberships now, it's going to be eight-hundred. This county is growing so fast, that facility is growing so fast because there's a desire for outdoor recreation, and I recommend we have to raise the fees across the board. We have to.
Clay?
So that's...
Do we need to bring that back at another meeting in order to raise, raise those fees?
Yes, ma'am, it's set by resolution, so we can have that back as early as the next meeting.
And the server position, I'm not familiar, I don't know if that was a replacement or not. That's a Justin question. I think it was somebody that quit and Justin replaced him.
It should have been a replacement. There weren't any new positions.
But as far as facility maintenance goes, the only time they ever come out there is if we put a work order in, like to paint the trailer or something like that, or, but facility maintenance never had a person work out there, never.
Stan, did you, did you say that there were facility maintenance people that were working at the golf course?
No, what, what I said was, we were in the process of dividing grounds maintenance away from, some, some of the grounds maintenance are at the golf course currently, and we have grounds maintenance throughout the county that, that deals with parks, and we have grounds maintenance that deals with this facility, um, the courthouse, the annex, um, admin, HR, all these non-park, non-recreational facilities, and we're dividing those out. Um, and so currently, there are some of them at the golf course at certain times, but only to, 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 you know, maintain the grounds at that facility. So, a- as we divide that function, how, you know, we may find...
The two areas we...
...FTE here or there.
We've had the, uh, parks maintenance, I've been, I was over it for three years until recently. We had, we've had the, uh, the bathroom on number four that sits out. Every now and then, the parks maintenance bathroom, uh, custodial would come by and clean that maybe once a month, and we have one person on staff at the golf course that is categorized under parks maintenance, and he, and that was for a health reason, that he's been located there in town. That was at the request of HR at the time. Uh, he's been there the whole three years, he's been with the county.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you wanted to, to raise the fees. I didn't realize that, that...
No, ma'am, I've tried...
We, we've been the ones holding you back on that.
No, no, we tried, I think, two or three times. We've talked about it, we just haven't got a lot of steam with it, but it definitely, we, we have members come inside and go, hey, y'all need to raise the fees. We definitely need to raise the fees.
Okay.
It's worth it now. It wasn't worth it three years ago. It's, it's a great...
Hold on just a second, hold on, hold on. Mr. Commissioner Curry had a good, a plan, and, and I applaud him for laying it out in detail. We've all had plenty of time to look at it, and we have gotten way off the, the motion. The motion was to do this, and it is not about fees, and it is not about who works where. So, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to get back to Commissioner Curry's motion.
Mr. Curry, you have a point?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to bring it back. Um, the point of this is, we can, we cannot do any of this and just get a maintenance building. But I've, I've gotten phone calls and I've talked to people during my campaign that, that are expressing the need for ADA playgrounds, autistic station, um, areas at some of our parks, and, and this just fell right in line when I went and started talking to Shane. Um, you know, I, that first number, when I saw one-point-five million, I was like, you know, will we build in the White House? I mean, I, I don't, I, I didn't understand. So, but then Shane did some extracurricular work and came back with some numbers, and I'm like, well, hell, let's try and knock off a lot of these birds with one stone and get some, some much-needed baseball fields, some parks. He gets his building. Um, you know, I've never played pickleball in my life and probably won't, but everybody likes it, so let's add that in there. Mr. Glydwell, thanks to, to some tennis courts and, and beach volleyball, great, if the money's there. I just don't want to take all this money out that we're going to throw towards the baseball fields. Um, so I, I just don't think the basketball courts will, will do that or the tennis courts. I just want a significant number of funds to go towards the, um, baseball fields at phase two, and that's all I'm trying to do. I'm trying to take what's already been allocated and budgeted and trying to get the best bang for our buck out of it. That's all that I'm trying to do.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I respect that, I respect that, and, and I agree that their facilities need to be, uh, we need to increase the facilities up there, I do. My point is, we just need to look at this other option as well, and so I don't have an issue with you moving forward to that since that money has already been earmarked for that. That's fine, but I just wanted to make the point that we need to go forward in this other as well, so we'll bring that up at the next meeting.
And, and I agree, I think we all agree. Me and Shane's had those same conversations up there, that, you know, I'm not, I don't want the, the golf course to make a million dollars a year. It'd be great if it did, but if, you know, if it breaks even, great.
That, oh, exactly.
You know, the only, I've been, I've been an opponent against the golf course for a while, and you guys know that. The only thing about really the golf course, I just don't like the liability of the, um, you know, the liquor aspect of it, you know, but that, that's just my opinion.
We'll bring that up.
Get on the, on the motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, are the, uh, is the county going to control use of this solely, or are we going to share the use with, uh, the school district?
Well, phase one, well, so phase one is so, solely county, phase two would be something that would have to be discussed with school district. That's something we have to look at what that partnership could look like and what those opportunities are. That's what this motion is effectively directing. That is the second part of the, we'll, we'll treat that as part of the motion, but it's just effectively a direction to staff for us to work and figure out what that would look like. If the school district's providing land, I would imagine it is a partnership.
And that's only on phase two? Correct.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Ms. Leitner.
These are, this is a great idea. I'm, I'm completely in support of it. Um, would like to caution the chairman to maybe allow a little bit of grace to speak, because this has finally calmed down. Everyone's starting to kind of come around and try to see the best in the golf course, but if you allow absolutely nothing to be discussed other than this right here today, you, another social media war is about to get started, and we're going, and I don't want to see that happen. Shane's been stressed to death.
Well, Ms. Leitner, I have to follow the, the protocol that our county's...
I, I understand that, but we're talking about the...
And there will be, there will be plenty of time to talk about it. We're just starting this, okay?
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm, I'm, I'm really in support of this, but I do have to say, if I understood the numbers correctly, and I hope you give me just a few seconds of grace here, that the restaurant seems to be putting out several hundred thousand more than it's bringing in. Um, if I understood, I, I know county arithmetic's a little bit different, but that kind of sounds like it. We've got bogeys closing down, we've got other restaurants struggling. I, I don't think that's fair. I don't think that this, Shane and Justin have even come up here and said, that's not really what they wanted. It's really unfair to other businesses. It's unfair to Shane, it's unfair to Justin. That restaurant should not be functioning at a several hundred thousand dollar a year loss. Look at how, how many other things that we could have out there that would be really beneficial, and I just, aside from that, I just have one question for Shane. Um, you mentioned on Hall Four that someone comes out, maybe once a month.
Ms. Leitner, you have to direct your questions to the board, not to Shane. We'll decide.
Okay, well, I, I just don't want to be rude to Shane. I, I want, I'm, I'm, because I'm not accusing him, I'm asking him if he's aware of something. But I, I'm just wondering if Mr. Supple is aware that maybe someone from Parks and Recreation has been going in and cleaning the bathrooms in the restaurant at least once a week. I don't know if that's been the case for the last two to four months, but, um, that's why I wanted to address him, because I, I wanted to ask him if he's aware of that, because I know for a fact that's what's been happening.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, go ahead.
So, yes, I'm aware of that fact. Since I was a Parks and Rec Director, we had a, we have a lady that's a custodial for Strictly Parks in the north end of the county. Uh, she asked for a special schedule to come in at five in the morning, and I said, that's fine, and she said, if you want to, I can come by and hit the bathrooms inside, because on the weekend at the golf course, we're doing a hundred-and-fifty rounds a day. And I said, look, if you come in and see that they're clean, don't bother them. If they're dirty, it would be nice to hit them before we get there on Monday morning. So, yes, she has done that several times.
Okay, so that's not, that's not something that you're having to hire an extra person or it's costing anything, is it? Okay.
Same, same lady that goes to number four.
Okay, okay.
All right.
But now, but we, but we do it during the week. I do it myself.
That's it for my comments, but I just, I, I hope that we can allow people to kind of say what they want to say, because we're finally coming around, everybody's coming to agreement, and this can be a great thing. I hate to see it blow up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? See you none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Go ahead, Mr. Curry.
So, we're going to go on to phase two?
Phase two is directed to, yeah.
All right, so, so phase two would be basically getting with the school board, um, sitting down with them to kind of do a joint effort, um, with the balance of the funding left from phase one. Um, I just kind of want to, wanted the direct staff to bring back those numbers and actually have a, a sit-down with the school board and see what options we have with those, those, the balance of those funds.
Okay, and that's in your motion?
Yes, sir.
And in your second.
Well, it's general direction to the staff, yeah, general direction. We don't need a separate motion.
All right.
And I will note, school district is starting their master plan for West Defuniac Elementary, which is the campus right there. They've indicated if we ever were going to have these conversations, now is the exact time, time to do it. So, now is the time, if we wish to proceed with this.
Okay, Mr. Curry, you ready for your next one?
That's all I have, sir.
Oh, is that Danny? I'm sorry. I know, we look alike.
Congratulations on your project there, Commissioner Curry.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, um...
Oh, Commissioner, give me one second. And, and, and congratulations on the, the, uh, fiscal responsibility, where you took a project that was a million and a half, sat down with staff, and figured out how to cut the costs in half, and then you didn't spend all the resources, you spent a portion of them on some slight upgrades, so you, I commend you for, for the fiscal exercise.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, first thing, we've been working with, uh, the Trust for Public Land for, um, two or three years to, uh, try to bring a, um, uh, some conservation space to, uh, the Sho River Basin. Um, the Trust for Public Land has a contract to buy, is it, it's fifteen-hundred-and-eighty-six acres, Mr. Talbert, I think.
I think so a little bit.
Uh, anyways, um, and, uh, the, the plan is, uh, to, for this trust to sell... Uh, anyways, and the, the plan is to, for this trust to sell that or to pass that sale on to the state. The cabinet is meeting on this project December the sixth. And the plan ultimately is to make a state park in that property. So it would be, it's really the first north of the interstate conservation land in Walton County of any size. And it would be our first state park. And so that they've requested a letter from the Board of County Commissioners to present to the cabinet December sixth. And so I'd make a motion that we allow the chairman to sign that letter of support for the Trust of Public Land Shoal River Camp Project.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the board? Seeing none? Any discussion from the audience? Mister Talbert, come on up, please. Jeff Steph, state your name and spell your last name, please.
Uh, Jeff Talbert, T-A-L-B-E-R-T. Good morning, everybody. This is a, a great project that, like Commissioner Gladwell said, we've been working on for a while. The idea is to bring these large conservation lands to North Walton and protect large areas of the Shoal River. Another important aspect is there's not really any public access along the Shoal River until you get to Highway ninety over by Cresview. And so this will also help open up those lands for people to enjoy that river, kayaking, hiking, all that, the, the type of stuff. So this is a very important first step to show the state that we are serious in protecting these lands. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you for bringing it forward. Any other discussion from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Uh, just as a note on that, on an adjacent part of that project, we do have a deed now for the two acres that was donated to us over on Shoal River. So that's, that will be conservation land going forward as well. My second item is, and I, I promised Mister Adkiss and I would be judicious. But our, our scenic corridor standards are at least thirty years old. And they have served their purpose. However, I'm not sure that, they're not things that we don't need to look at. And so recently, there were some code complaints on a project that I think we, we need to seriously look at. I don't, I, I applaud code for doing their job. But when, when they're out enforcing laws that are outdated, that's our fault, not theirs. So my request is, is that we direct staff, first of all, I would make a motion that we abate any code enforcement on Highway ninety-eight scenic corridor standards until the board has a chance to revisit the code. And without stepping on Commissioner Drake's toes, I think he's gonna be talking about something similar. Commissioner Drake, at the risk of putting words in your mouth.
Let, let, let me do this.
I, I was trying to be very careful not to step.
Oh, no, no, no. Why, why don't we just say that in agreement thirty-two and thirty-three kind of parallel each other in, in substance, why don't you bundle up your motion to encompass thirty-two and thirty-three and it would just be to modernize the ordinance?
For ninety-eight and thirty-eight?
Correct.
If that's acceptable. And to abate all code actions that are pending at this time on those standards.
So having made the motion, I'll second it.
Any more discussion in the board? Seeing none? Any from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
And I thank you, Commissioner Drake, for, because I was trying to be very judicious.
I'm assuming you're good with not talking then on yours, right, Mister Drake?
We're done.
Okay, good. All right, Ms. Johns?
Uh, yes, what I would like to do is, back in, I believe, September of twenty twenty-two, the county was working on a tree ordinance and they had public meetings and it got to a certain level and it just kind of dropped. And I, I don't know why. I don't know the background of that. But what I would like to do is to bring this back and just have staff look at this, update it, see what we need to do. Because we do need to have a tree ordinance in place. There's an awful lot of clear cutting going on. There's a lot of, of cutting going on without any permit. There's a lot of things like that. And, and we don't have an ordinance in place. And so in order for us to protect and, and what the, this initial ordinance from then, it's an ordinance amending the Walton County Land Development Code substantially amending Chapter four, creating additional tree protections, mitigation and reparation standards, and amending Section four point zero five zero two pertaining to natural community protection, providing for conflicts, providing for severity, providing for scribners, errors, and providing for liberal interpretation, providing for modification and effective date. So it's a, it's a well thought out, a well done ordinance, but we never adopted it. And so I would like to bring it back so that we can adopt it. So I'd like staff, to have staff to review it, see where we're at on it. Matt Carpenter, would you like to speak to this?
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department, C-A-R-P-E-N-T-E-R. If I can remember to spell my own name this morning. I'd like another cup of coffee first. We did take that through the, the amendment of the Land Development Code process and we got all the way through first reading. And the general consensus of the board at the time was not to move forward on that. It's been approximately two years since we went through this process. It might be good that we start the process again at Planning Commission, if that would be the board's direction, since it has been such a long time since we did consider this. Would you suggest we have a public workshop before we bring this back to Planning Commission?
I would.
Then we will expeditiously get that scheduled and revisit this proposed ordinance.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Anything else, Ms. Johns?
Nope, that's all I've got.
Okay. I don't have anything. Other public comments? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and spell your last name.
Lisa Vega, V-E-I-G-A. On the tree ordinance, I went to every single one of those public workshops. We had a phenomenal arborist, Andrea Schnapp, that was involved. We had someone from the county that kept pushing out some really great talented individuals that we had. But at the end of the day, what it really kind of looked like was if you're a developer and you end up taking everything down and taking out more mature trees than you were supposed to, it was a twenty-five thousand dollar fine. So now every order they're gonna build is just building another twenty-five thousand. So we weren't really saving trees. We were just telling the developers, it's gonna cost you another twenty-five grand. So I think when it comes back for public workshop and before it's adopted, that proportion needs to really be considered.
Good. Hope you'll be at those meetings.
Anyone else? Seeing none? We, this just, we don't need an ordinance for this. Okay. All right, any other public comments? Seeing none? We'll start the reorganization, an election of chair and vice chair, and appointments to committees and board. We're open, the floor is open for election of the chair.
I'd like to nominate Donna Johns for the chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any, any more nominations? Seeing none? Any discussion? Seeing none? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Election of the vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Mister, uh, Commissioner Curry.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Mister Curry, you okay with that? You had kind of a weird look on your face.
I think I just got my toes wet today and I'm already in a vice chair position. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Gladwell.
Any more discussion of Mister Curry? Any other nominations?
I, I'd just like to ask, are you okay with that?
I believe in jumping in. Let's go.
Did, did Commissioner Drake have any desire?
No.
Okay.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, commissioner appointments. Before we get started, I would like to, to say to the new chair that's in, in the board that I would like to be put back on the TPO in Mister McCormick's spot. I would like to be put back on the TPO in Mister McCormick's spot.
I, I do have, the canvassing board traditionally has been the chair, but the chair couldn't do it this year because the chair was running. So I did it. But, and normally on the off year, we don't have any need for the canvassing board, but this year we're gonna have to have a special election. So I think the chair should go to the, to the, the spot and I don't mind being the alternate.
So we just switch positions?
We just switch positions. But, and like I said, normally that wouldn't mean anything this year, but this year it's going to mean. I mean, there is gonna be some work to be done.
Okay.
But, and other than that, I'd like to keep all the rest, everything else I got.
Can we just take it down from the top?
Go ahead.
And, and go to.
So canvassing board is handled.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So canvassing board has been handled with the flip flop. The next one is the.
Career source.
Which is the chair or the chair's designate, Chair Johns. It is now to your discretion. Do you wish to serve on that board or designate one of your fellow board members?
Would one of my fellow board members like to serve on that board?
Commissioner Curry.
Commissioner Curry, would you like to serve on that board?
Think I'm gonna change my name already.
Well, I get it wrong anyway.
Don't make me poke you to make you say yes.
Well, since my predecessor was on it, I'll say, yeah.
Wonderful. Okay, so the Talk to Hatchet Bay Estuary Committee?
I'd like to stay on that one.
Okay, wonderful. Would anyone else like to be the alternate?
Mister Anderson, you want it?
On the what?
The Talk to Hatchet Bay Estuary.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be the alternate.
It really should be commissioners that touch the bay.
Start working your way of getting out of it.
Well, I mean.
Uh, the Defense Support Initiatives, I, I'd like to be on that one. Is everyone all right with that?
Feel free.
Economic Development Alliance?
I'd like to stay on that.
I'd like to stay on it myself or take my predecessor's spot.
I, I'll take that, that, that as an alternative.
The BLC? The BLC?
Yeah. I'm on the.
Oh, you're on the BLC?
Yeah, I'm on that right now.
Commissioner Drake, did you want to be on the EDA?
No.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Curry, Commissioner Gladwell on the EDA, and Commissioner Anderson on the Business Leadership Council. The Gulf Consortium?
You're on that and I'm the alternate.
Anyone else want to be on that?
I'll do it if you don't want to do it.
I'll be the alternate.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Gladwell as the primary and Commissioner Anderson as the alternate. The Local Restore Act Committee?
Actually, me and you, but I don't think we've had a meeting in ten years.
Well, let's just stay on it then, you want to?
I like committees like that.
The Okaloosa-Walden TPO, okay.
I'd like on that.
Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Drake, would you like to be on that?
I want to be on the last three.
The last three? Okay.
Or the, I'd, I'd like to be on Regional Utility Authority and Small County Coalition. And then if you choose to be chair, I want you to do that. But if you choose a designate, I would, I would, I would serve as the TDC designate.
Okay, I can, I can pass that to you.
I wouldn't mind being on the TPO.
Okay.
Me and.
So you've got me on the TPO and you've got Danny on the TPO and we've got Dan Curry on the TPO.
I'd like to tell the commissioner.
Okay, we're gonna have four of them?
Well, we can't, we only have three.
Yeah.
And one alternate, one alternate. Who wants to be the alternate?
Would you consider being the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Let Tony, let Tony be back on there.
Now, Mister Curry, that means you can, anybody can go to those meetings. So anyone you want to go to, you can go.
Okay, thank you.
And if, if.
And if one of us don't go.
You want to be on it, we can talk about that.
And if a board member does not show up, the, you get to actively participate. So it's not if somebody fails, fails to perform, it's literally, you only get two out of three there and you're there, you're number three.
Okay.
We only got, we're outgunned anyways. We need every vote we can get.
Yeah.
That's true, that's true. Public Safety Coordinating Council, Commissioner McCormick was on that. Would you like that?
I'll do it one day.
Commissioner Gladwell, thank you. Okay, and the Regional Utilities, we have Commissioner Drake. And anyone else like to be?
And is the Regional Utility Authority, we've had this coming forward, is not actually regional utilities, just to be clear.
Okay.
We sometimes get that question.
How often do they have a meeting?
Never.
Never?
I was, I've been on it eight years and I think I've gone one time. I was an alternate the first four years, but I think I've gone. They just never have a forum.
Okay, how about, since that's the case, Brad Drake, Commissioner Drake wants to be on that, how about Commissioner Curry? And then who would like to be the, I'll be the alternate. Is that all right with you, Mister Curry?
Sure.
It's all right with me.
And Small County Coalition?
This one's an important one.
Commissioner Drake wants to be on that. Stan Sunday is on that.
He's your staff liaison. Yeah, I'm, I'm on the, I'm the elected, I'm elected to the executive board on that, so I'd like to stay there.
Mister Curry, you want to be on that or Ms. Johns? You got all three on there, right? Brad?
We've got.
Well, we only got two.
Well, Drake and, and Stan Sunday.
Okay, Mister Drake, you're gonna be on there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
And then on the TDC, Commissioner Drake?
So you are designating Commissioner Drake to be the TDC appointee, correct?
Yes.
All right. While we're doing this, let's just go ahead and, I guess, address it now. While the TDC has been given the opportunity to make a recommendation of the chair, you have the choice at your level to determine to appoint the chair or to give them the authority to do so. Historically, when the chair of the BCC has taken that seat, they have designated themselves the chair of the TDC. But we probably should take it up now since you are the current chair. At this point in time, we will have a December meeting, which you are not going to be at now, based on this, so.
Well, based on the, our travel, the conference.
Right. So my question is, do we want to go ahead and designate Commissioner Drake to be the chair of the TDC? Or do we want them to take that up at their December meeting and come back?
How do you feel about that?
I'll find a settlement today.
You'd like to have.
Sure.
Chair be chair today? Okay, well.
So the BCC has elected its opportunity. When we have a motion at the end of this entire slate approval, Madam Clerk, please reflect that the BCC has selected that they will select the chairman of the TDC for this term and it will be appoint, chairman designate, Commissioner Brad Drake. And I make a motion that we accept. We've got three more, we've got three more. Back, back page. So, so to be clear, Commissioner Drake, you said the last three. You were not referring to the back page.
Maybe it was not. I didn't even realize it was there.
I've never seen anybody asked to be on the Value Adjustment Board, so I was a little shocked.
The Transportation Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Board. And they, they meet every, every other month maybe or quarterly. It's a very good board. It meets in Defuniak Springs. They're very helpful. Would someone else like to take that? Commissioner Curry?
Boy, I tell you what, it hates, hurts being the newbie.
It does, don't it? I don't like being a rookie. All right, you twisted my arm.
Thank you. And the Tri-County Community Council, currently Commissioner Gladwell, you're on that?
I, I'll stay.
Okay, okay, and.
I've been the vice chair for six years on that. But I've got a good chair.
Okay.
So I don't ever have to do anything.
Okay, the last one is the Value Adjustment Board. And we currently have Commissioner Gladwell, Commissioner Anderson, and then Boots McCormick was the alternate, so.
I'm, I would say, Commissioner Anderson, I need to stay because we're already into that process and I'm, I'm the chair.
Okay.
But anybody, I mean, Mister Drake or Mister Curry want to be?
The alternate? It, it's just the alternate, so it wouldn't be too bad.
Mister Curry?
All right, okay, okay.
You, you got it?
We've thrown you in the briar patch and now. We've thrown you in the briar patch enough.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so we have, for the Value Adjustment Board, Commissioner Gladwell, Commissioner Anderson, and the alternate is Commissioner Drake. Yes.
Would you have any comments? You haven't seen him?
I've got him.
Okay, Mr. Sweeney, what adds?
Canvassing Board is Chairman, Chairperson Johns and Commissioner Gladwell.
Is the alternate.
As the alternate. Career Source, Oaklusa-Walton, is Commissioner Curry. Chalktahatchee Bay Estuary Committee is Commissioner Curry and Chair Johns. Defense Support Initiatives Committee is Chair Johns. EDA is Commissioner Curry, Commissioner Gladwell. And the EDA Business Leadership Council is Commissioner Anderson. Gulf Consortium, Commissioner Gladwell and Commissioner Anderson. Local Restore Act Committee, Chair Johns and Commissioner Gladwell. Oaklusa-Walton TPO, Commissioner Gladwell. The alternate is Commissioner Curry, Chair Johns and Commissioner Anderson. Public Safety Coordinating Council is Commissioner Gladwell. Regional Utility Authority is Commissioner Drake, Chair Johns and Commissioner Curry. Small County Coalition, Commissioner Gladwell, Commissioner Drake, staff liaisons, myself, Stan Sunday. Tourist Development Council is Commissioner Drake, he will be the chair. And Transportation Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Board is Commissioner Curry. Tri-County Community Council is Commissioner Gladwell. And Value Adjustment Board, I think I got that one right, Commissioner Gladwell, Commissioner Anderson, and Commissioner Curry.
As the alternate.
Drake, Drake, I'm the last one.
I was fine with.
Did make the motion quick it up.
He's just used to writing Curry down.
Drake as the alternate. If we're gonna have a motion to approve that slate, and the chairman?
Subtle.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, if you'll acknowledge, those are your designees to the ones that are designates.
Yes.
Okay, now you can vote.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes.
Madam Chair, before we recess, if the board has no other business, before we recess, we would like to take the opportunity to thank and recognize the outgoing chairman, Mr. Commissioner Tony Anderson.
Absolutely, should we go up front and take a picture with him?
Thanks, sir. Join me down front.
Mr. Kelly's here?
Thank you, Mr. Curry, for not making this too short.
I saw the? Yeah, now that Stan just moved, look.
Sir, if you'd like, come ahead.
Here, that was good, squeeze in just a little bit. Okay. Big smiles, and then, three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Nutra, I forget you missed.
We're gonna break it, we're gonna break it for a second.
Congratulations.
I'd like to take a minute. I'd like to thank the staff and the board for putting up with me. Chairman, they all know how much I dislike it, and they supported me even when I messed up. And I wish Ms. Johns to have a peaceful year. And Mr. Curry is vice chair, congratulations to both of y'all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I know y'all do a good job, and I just make a motion, we recess.
Second.
We have a motion at a second recess. Recession till one o'clock.
All right.
Yep, we're done.